Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming to this wonderful session. Just short announcement, the session will be shorter than expected due to some technical difficulties yesterday. The Women in Geoscience and Engineering special session will take place just after this one, so please do not run away after this session because there will be another interesting one. So, I present myself, my name is Filippo Vergini. I am the chairman of the Young Professional Special Interest Community. And that's me, the top of the list. And we are seven committee members. There's Matteo here, present with us, raise your hand. And we have Danielle Romaine, Leonardo Nilskeid, which unfortunately could not make it. For future reference, if you have any interest in young professional community, please look us up on the EAG website, drop us an email, ask any question, interact with us through the LinkedIn webpage, and we'll be happy to interact with you, follow up on your ideas or any question. You know, because of this shortening of the session, I will not spend much more time, but I will talk about something a little bit more about young professional. So how does it work? We have four amazing speakers, which we'll now introduce in a second. They will introduce themselves with few slides, talk about themselves, their career. We'll introduce some topics. And after they're all done, I will ask the audience to sit at the table with one of the four speakers and start some kind of discussion. You can start a discussion, asking a question, or maybe one of the speaker, they want to lead on a specific topic. I don't know if any of you attended the session last year in Vienna, which turned out to be amazing, so there will be a very similar format, and pretty sure you will enjoy it. So the four speakers are, I need to read it here because they're very complicated profession. So we have Ivan Vasconcelos, who is Assistant Professor at Utrecht University, was previously as Lamborghini Gold Resource Center. We have Everslop, who is a professor at the U of T and Director of Education, Civil Engineering and Geoscience. We have Anna Shonessi, who is Executive Director of the Earth Resources Laboratory at MIT Boston, and previously Exploration Manager and Geophysicist in different companies. And we have François Ombaheur, who is a Directional Exploration at Total, relationship with university and school geoscience disciplines. And then we'll start alphabetical order by name, as promised. Well, Anna, which will give her presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome. I must admit, I'm very, very excited to be here today and to talk to you a little bit about myself and my career. And specifically, I've chosen to talk about dual careers in geosciences and engineering because that's something that I have become an expert at. Again, I'm the Executive Director at the Earth Resources Laboratory at MIT, after really a long career in industry. So some of the things I'm going to talk about is a little bit about my background, and then some of the dual career challenges and opportunities. You can read the different things, partner hidden biases, work-life balance, two-body problem, but also some of the rewards. And I hope that many of you will become, if you're already dual career couple, so hopefully you can learn some tips and tricks from this. So I'm actually born in the US by Swedish parents, so I returned to Sweden as a very young child and was raised there. And this has actually influenced my career quite a bit, partly because I have dual citizenship, so it was very easy from the very beginning to work in the US, even for summer jobs early on. I have an undergraduate degree from University of Gothenburg and a master's from MIT, both in oceanography with emphasis on marine geophysics. And because I'm going to talk about dual careers, I have to mention that I got married in 1980 with Dan Shonessi, who is also a geoscientist, geophysicist. And to continue on my background, my professional career has spanned many different companies, partly because I was in a dual career situation. And so I have worked for Mobil Oil, Saudi Arco, Texaco, Khmer-Gi, Anadarko, that became Anadarko, small company called IHRDC, and then now I'm at MIT where I got my undergraduate degree. So it's really been kind of like a full circle for me. I worked in a lot of disciplines, partly because there were times when we would move and I had to look for something different, and it wasn't always the type of job that I had done before. But partly because of my interests and partly because I always enjoyed learning new things and was happy to switch. We have lived in six different locations. We started our careers in Dallas, then went to Saudi Arabia, Norway, New Orleans, Houston, and now for the last seven years or so, we've been in Boston. And my claim to fame, and one of the reasons I'm talking about dual careers, is that in all these moves, my husband and I have managed to find positions for both of us. And that is something that I think possibly many of you will have to take a look at as you go forward in your careers. So some of the topics around dual careers and some of the keys to success. For me, finding a partner, and a partner that basically shares your vision on family, but also on both your careers, not just on his or hers personal career, but you as a team. For me, having open and frequent discussions about where you were in your life and career is something that's absolutely essential. You have to do it all the time. You have to talk about potential scenarios. You have to talk about opportunities that couldn't be missed. And yes, there are times when you have to say, this is an opportunity, looks great, but it's not going to work for us as a team. You have to have clear roles and responsibilities, who does what. And of course, you have to have fun together and you have to make time for each other, which can become sort of difficult if you're a very busy career couple. You will likely find that there are hidden biases within any company, and it's not necessarily only if you're within a dual career. But some of the things that I've experienced that were that I wouldn't consider being transferred because I was married. There have been times when people thought that I wouldn't want to go to the field because I was a woman. And there was actually a time when someone suggested I didn't want a promotion because then I'd get ahead of my husband. And also simple things, like you don't want to travel because you have kids. Now, there are very easy ways, or there are ways to mitigate these things, and it's all in communication. So you basically have to make sure that your supervisor and HR knows where you are and what you're thinking, and that you always want to hear about opportunities that you qualify for, and that it's up to you to basically say no, thank you, if it doesn't fit you and the family at that time. The two-body problem, it is a term that we use, and it's one of the most common challenges, especially for if you work for an international company, where moving up often means that you get a transfer and you're expected to take that transfer. In many, many times, this could be a dream job for one of you, but not so much for the other one. So there are thoughts that you might consider if you're the trailing spouse or to help your trailing spouse, find something that best fits your background and skills. It might not be perfect, but then, of course, it can turn into something that becomes better later on. Sometimes there are opportunities to work remotely for your previous employer. I think this is much more common now than it used to be. And of course, you can consider consulting. In fact, my husband turned into consulting about 25 years ago, and that made it much easier for us to be able to move because I was transferred. And then how to improve chances for new opportunities if you have moved or if you are moving. One, of course, is to always, always keep learning. And it's not just learn things in your own field, but of course, as geoscientists and engineers, we actually need to learn more engineering if you were a geoscientist and vice versa. And it's always, of course, good to take any class that's offered in soft skills or communication or team leadership. All these types of classes can help you come in handy when you least expect it. Networking, this is what you're doing right now, it's getting involved in professional Networking can go in different directions, so it's often extremely useful if you can get someone as an advocate or a sponsor. And what I mean with this is someone high up in the organization that basically speaks for you, that puts your name forward when an opportunity comes up, and someone that basically believes in you. Can be a very, very useful thing, especially if you work in a large corporation. And then mentors, seek out a mentor that listens and talks to you, someone that's your spouse or your partner will always support you. But there's something that's very different from having a less subjective sponsor, someone that's objective and can listen and sort of share with you what they think might be the best way to go. Work-life balance, it's a challenge whether you're in a dual career or not, but in principle, at work, of course, prioritize tasks, delegate if you can, and say no. This is something that is not always very easy to do. We're always sort of trained to say yes and so on and so forth. But there are times when it's absolutely the best thing to say no and say, I have enough on my plate, I want to concentrate on the things that I'm working on, and I will not help you with this at this time. And then, of course, at home, you can set priorities, and if you can afford it, you hire help. And to juggle the life between the two of you, do make sure you take some time for each other, and do make sure you make special things. Now, for me, I also believe that you have to do something for yourself that doesn't involve your partner. And so for me, for example, one way I really relax and get energized is I'm a triathlete, and I just did my triathlon a couple of weeks ago, and it's the 31st year that I've been doing them. And it's just something that makes me excited, gets me out there, gets me fit, and so on and so forth. So find something that you like, some hobby that reminds you of what life is all about and what's important sometimes. Career rewards, dual career rewards, there are a lot of win-wins. And for one thing, to be with a partner in the relationship where you're both intellectually stimulated, it's just very interesting, it's very exciting. And you learn for more than yourself. So I've always felt like I learned not quite twice as fast as some of my colleagues, but certainly much more than if I had just been working on my own. It's fascinating. Of course, if you work for different companies, you're not always allowed to share everything, but still you can share a lot of things. Financial rewards, if you work in this industry and you have two people that are working on their career, that can work very well. And of course, it becomes a very, very interesting journey, as I can attest to. So thank you very much.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Everslop. I'm a professor at the U of T. And here you see a picture, on the left is me receiving my award, starting to become a postdoc. And on this side, you see me here again, on the other side of the table, handing over the diploma to one of the PhD students, who will then start his career in this case. So I talk a little bit about the whole period from starting as a postdoctoral researcher to the professor that I am now, and all the aspects that I've experienced, and all the things that were important to me in this period. And then I will also summarize basically the things that are of interest to discuss with you. So I've grouped it in large chunks, let's say eight, seven, eight years, it's not exact, of course. But the first five years I spent as a postdoc, and it is pretty similar to the situation that you will encounter now if you start an academic career. I got my personal grant, which was very nice, because it gave me a lot of freedom to do what I wanted in that period, but I soon learned that, in fact, if you want to have an academic career, you cannot only concentrate on research, you also have to do something for the students, because that is really one of the core things that you do in the university. And I discovered that I liked it very much, so it was a pure joy to start teaching and to be interacting with students. And also, I started advising PhD students as making your research bigger than your own, and also that was something that I enjoyed very much. And after those five years, I started as an assistant professor. And there, you start to become a part of a larger community. As a postdoc, you tend to be a little bit isolated, work for yourself, and in the group, but then if you become a faculty member, then suddenly your horizon becomes a department or even larger parts in the university. And I started also to become more active internationally by, for example, starting in the beginning one workshop, and then that has grown out into something that I basically started and continued, and is now a biennial series, where every two years, there is a workshop going on since 2001, in which I'm still involved all the time. As an associate professor, you assume more responsibilities in the organization in setting up a group. And then it is also good to realize that in the end, you are working somewhere for a very long time, and it's good to go to another place to get new perspectives, to really work with different people that think in a different way. And also, you got to have a larger perspective on education. In the beginning, you're mostly teaching, and that in itself, learning the trade of teaching is something that takes energy and takes time. And then the whole program that you're teaching in is something that has a bigger background and a bigger story that is continuously evolving. And over time, you find that it needs restructuring, and to become part of such a team is very And so, growing into the national community is something that is very nice, because you do networking like you are doing here today, but also you start a conversation on all the work that you do, not only on research topics, but in the general life as an academic. So you feel embedded in a much larger body than even your own university. And it's also very nice to work on something with a very large group, like restructuring an educational program. And to create a shared vision and to implement it together is really rewarding, at least it was very rewarding for me. Now, while all these things are going on, the institute, the university, is also a body that changes, and the requirements that they set on the people that work there also changes. For example, during this period, suddenly, and we all know it now, publisher Paris, suddenly it became very important to publish papers. And by now, we have understood that that is not the way to do it, but such things will come up, and it is important to respond to that and not to wait too much. So if the institute puts that as a constraint for promoting you in your job, then that is something that you have to consider. Now, the later six years, as a full professor, then you assume even larger responsibilities, and also you take on more different types of jobs. For example, not only having your own research team, but also guiding young faculty that just come to universities to start their academic careers. And the meaning of working and careers and life becomes something that takes more attention in your daily job than it used to do before. And of course, because the core business is, in fact, teaching, delivering graduates to the market, and doing your research, and interacting between research and education, but you take on many other jobs in terms of management, and that will take away time and energy from you in terms of education and research. And like Anna has already said at the end of her presentation, when you get too much to do, it is really very important to say no to certain things. And that is the importance of a good job balance in the way you structure your job is something that you have to keep in mind. And in this period, the whole recruiting strategy of the university has changed completely. So now we don't put people anymore directly in a permanent position, we give them a tenure track position, that means that they get six years to prove themselves as somebody who has a high potential, who have a very strong and fulfilling academic career. But it also means that from the beginning of your academic career, you know that you will have to be excelling in research, you have to be a very good teacher, you have to get teaching qualifications. If you are teaching in an English language program, probably the university will ask you to have a proven qualification of English proficiency. And you do also fundraising, you have to work on your international visibility, you have to take on organizational roles. So I see in my university at least, that many of the tenure track assistant professors, they have a hard time in being relaxed and enjoy the work that they do. And that is a little bit of a pity, because in principle, that is what working in the university should be about. So nice topics to discuss for an academic career is that at least you will have two jobs when you start, and that is teaching and doing research and setting up a research group. And the key thing to remember there is that when you start, you're young, and you're slightly older than the students you work with, but as time progresses, you will grow older, but the people you work with will be in the same age group. And that is something that you really must enjoy, at least for me, I find it very rewarding to be able to work with students that are in this age group. I like it very much, and I'm very happy that I did an academic career. But I also know of other colleagues who found later that they did not like it so much anymore. And then, of course, you can still switch, so you can leave it if you don't like it very much. You have to keep track of the requirements for job promotion in your own institute, but also in the larger communities, because different universities may have different criteria, and certainly in different countries, there are different criteria. And if you would like to have a global career, it's something to consider. Progressing career usually means taking on more jobs, and that means also that you'll become more efficient, there's no way around it, and of course, it also happens because you become more experienced. But it also requires you to think more carefully about when to say yes and when to say no to something. The working environment for myself is very important, and I think it is something to also to think about, to consider when you look at it. If I look at my university, the gender balance is very negative. We are around 85% males and only 15% females, and that is something that we all think should change, and that we have been saying that already for 15 years, and nothing has happened. And so now we finally come to the point that we say we are going to do it, that we are going to implement it, and I'm very happy that we are at that stage at the moment. And I think it's also good to think about the necessary skill sets to have a fulfilling career in academia. And it would be nice for you to think about it and to discuss it with me, and I don't want to put it into your heads what those are, so it's nice to think about. And that's it for me. Thank you.
So hello, it's a real pleasure to be in front of you. Okay, it works. Okay, the challenge I had when I accepted to be there was how can I get your attention by resuming a 25-year career in the same major company? And I wanted to say to you that, yes, it can be great. At the beginning, were passion for science, and this passion was fueled by a Brian professor during my first university year, who convinced me to go on with geoscience. Afterwards, motivation of hard work, of course, to integrate the School of Geology in Nancy in France, but not in exploration and production business. At these times, you know, the oil and gas business was depressed a little bit like now, and I found wiser to study hydrogeology and civil engineering, because I was thinking it will bring me more chances to get a job at the end of my studies. Being said that, I have been able to seize opportunity to make an internship for Alpha Kitten in Po. And opportunity is a very important word, but I want to bring to the fore, because you have to recognize them, and you have to seize them, and I think that as young professional, you have to generate them or make them happen. So from that, there are really two things to retain, opportunities and passion. So now I have some slides resuming my bar code. And the black words are technical keywords, so I won't comment them, there is no interest on that, and I will focus more on the red ones. So at the beginning, step one was a learning step, as a junior production geologist for five years in France, producing geomodel in different environments. And what I retained from this period that could be useful for you is you have to be modest, don't hesitate to ask who knows, because we'll always find people who are keen to help young professionals to learn and progress. The importance, of course, of teamwork, and maybe the most important thing is time will tell, you know? You are never sure in geoscience to be right, and time will make you maybe change your mind. New data, new wells, new seismic processing can make your geological model completely change. So if you are right along at a given time, maybe one year or two years later, it will be the contrary, so be modest also on that. Step two was the field work, three years in Nigeria in an asset team following the first phase of development of offshore fields. And here, I learned a lot on the value of data, so the difficulty of data acquisition, the energy and time to get good data, and also the representativeness and the uncertainties attached to these datas. But I was, I think, strongly, I didn't have this experience before, but has certainly affected the quality of the geomodel I had produced before this experience. Cross-functionality, always, we were in a team with geophysicists, reservoir engineers, geologists, and we learned from each other, and we, after some months, were able to represent the others in daily or weekly meetings of a project, and discuss with drillers and producers, so very, very key things. Of course, working in a multicultural environment in a country which is not so easy, and the richness attached to this experience. And of course, as an asset team, following operation, reactivity, and the reward of seeing the results of new wells, new acquisition, and the impact on the models. Third position was the business time, in Paris, in new ventures teams looking for assets on which to invest in former Soviet assets on which to invest in former Soviet Union. So I learned a lot about business, what NPV means, discover new colleagues, lawyers and bankers, and always the same things. After, after data rooms, being able to, to be reactive, to, to work with the support from specialists in very short delays. Of course, always the importance of data value, because you are using data that you have not acquired and monitored. And at the end of that, being able to, to travel in minus forty degrees Celsius part of the world, that is not so easy, but quite fun. After that, the management time with two positions as head of specialty, petrophysical synthesis, and as head of laboratory, exploration laboratory in our technical center in Po. And then I discovered the new, new things to, to, to monitor and manage, so safety, health, and quality, of course, so people management and development, the communication, we had a lot of visitors or VIP visiting the labs, R and D, we, we have stronger R and D activity with some publications, and pedagogy, trying to, to explain people what we were doing with simple words, and adapt our, our discourse to, to the people in front of us. So that brings me to my current position. As it's more human resource and communication, or in technical image promotion, as in charge of academic relationships with universities and schools for geoscience disciplines. And there I can, I can use my experience to, to go on trying to, to develop people, to communicate, always in a multicultural environment, and all this for, most of all for talent detection. So from that, I will leave you some take-home messages. If you are interested by, by applying for a position in a major company, you have to, as I said before, to seize or even generate opportunities. There are not so many, some internship opportunities or post-grade contract opportunities or PhDs, know to reconnect them and seize them, because it's very important, you know, sometimes they are not passing by another time. Make your passion be recognized. If you get an opportunity as an internist, as a PhD or postdoc, your passion will be, will be praised and recognized. That makes the difference between us, between you. Know to learn from elders, to be modest, agile and cross-functional, it's more and more important in business in a, in a more and more moving environment, and of course, consolidate your experience. And the company you are in has to develop and recognize your talents on a long-term plan, it's very important, has to know to capitalize on people's experience, and fuel your motivation through attractive job position and projects, and provide you opportunity to change domain, discipline, or even branch. And this is the case in, in major companies, integrated between upstream and downstream business. So once again, the two most important words are opportunities and passion. And of course, if you, you may not have opportunities, particularly on, on this difficult business context and competition. So what I said is, it's easy to say, but maybe not so easy to do. So in that case, I think what you will have to do is to be patient, to continue to develop yourselves by doing R and D activities, PhD, postdocs, apply for position in service companies or in a, in an independent company, and continue to, to, to grow and, and capitalize on your competencies, and then will be able maybe to seize opportunities to join a major company afterwards. Okay, in a major company, you may not raise the steps as fast as you, as you would like to, that's a problem, because the competition is quite hard, and it can create many frustration. You can have not all your initiatives concretized for the same reasons, or because we have always in a, in a major company to, to make decisions with, with a high vision, and maybe your project is not fitting with, with high-level strategic vision. You may not become the expert of, once again, competition is hard, you, there may be over professionals, skills professionals, but can be designed as expert before you. And you may not have the R and D career you will have in academia, I mean, the number of publications, the rewards. Why? Because it's not often the priority of a major company. It's good for the image, but it's not strategic, and we have a lot of confidentiality constraint in our R and D programs, but not allow you to, to publish all you, you would like to. So that completes my presentation. I will be glad to exchange with you during the roundtable, and afterwards to, to receive you on our booth. Thank you for your attention.
Hey, guys. That's not me. That's also not me. That is me. Right, I'm Ivan Vaz Konselos, I'm a professor at Utrecht University. I won't hold you up for very long, because I'd like actually for you to spend the time chatting with the speakers, and I'm glad I came last, because I'll borrow various points from my previous speakers as we go along. I was in industry for almost ten years after my PhD, and now I'm in academia, so I guess they've asked me to come here, so I could tell you a little bit about what research is like in both places. So I'll mostly talk to you about research, because I actually never worked in, for example, an asset team in an oil company. I never did any sales, so I can't really speak about the business side of industry, because I actually never did any of it. Well, I can give you opinions, but I didn't actually do anything related to that. So when it comes to education, I was once a student too. I did my undergraduate at the University of Sao Paulo in Brazil, in physics, and I could have chosen to do physics, astronomy, oceanography, atmospheric science, but I chose geophysics. And the reason I chose geophysics is because at the time, geophysics was exciting, because it involved computers, and I was excited about computers. It involved actual sort of big data sets, and I was excited about that, and I was particularly excited about the fact that I could get a job with it. Because I grew up in Brazil, and in a medium-class family, which in Brazil means that you will have, your parents will not support you when you come to the age of twenty. And so, you know, most science in Brazil actually to this day doesn't pay very well, so it was simply the fact that I could get a job, and I could go abroad, and I could have a career on my own. And I thought, actually, I was just gonna work for a company, make loads of money, and be happy. But actually, it turns out that when I did my PhD at the Colorado School of Mines, that's, I've always liked science, but then I really found a passion for research, right? I thought research was the coolest thing ever, I still do, and I decided that I just wanted to do research. Right, so then what happened was I joined Ion, GX Technology for about three years, and I telecommuted from Spain, I lived in Barcelona, that's why that photo is there, and you go, wow, you lived in Barcelona, that's awesome. And it is an awesome city. But I don't recommend telecommuting for very long, and you can ask me about it when we sit down, for various reasons. But it was a good time, and I worked with good people, and I enjoyed it. And then I joined Schlumberger, the research center in Cambridge, so the Schlumberger, the research part of Schlumberger, and there's a picture of Cambridge there, and it does look like that most of the time, gray. But it's actually also a nice place to live, and I really enjoyed my time in Schlumberger, but I sort of got a bit itchy living in industry, because I had other research interests, and in particular, I wanted to work with people like you. And so we'll talk about that in a minute. So eventually, I was lucky, so someone spoke about opportunity. I've always worked on research, and I've always tried to be as good as I possibly could, but I can tell you that if you look for an academic job, that sometimes is not even enough, you will have, to have some luck. It's also competitive in academia as much as it is in industry, and it's not that easy to find a job, but I was lucky with this one. I live in a very nice place, Utrecht, in case you've never been. If you ever want to visit, please send me an email, you will be welcome to come. So I have some memes here about what research life is like in industry and academia, so first, industry. You've seen memes like this before. And the reason I put this up is because when you make choices, you usually have your own feelings about what you want to do, but the feelings of other people, of the people around you matter, right? Usually the feelings of your peers, friends, family, matter, and the feelings of your professional peers on the other side also matter, right? So here's what society thinks of the oil industry, and make no mistake, that is what most people think. They do not have a good image generally of the oil industry, especially in the Western world, it's slightly different maybe in some other countries, I don't know how China is like, there are some Chinese students here, maybe they can speak about it after a while. But, so some countries don't have such a negative vision of the oil industry, but definitely in the Western world, what you will get is generally at, at best, this. That's the best thing. If not, you'll get plain-out criticism for being in the oil industry, right? Now that's where academia thinks what you do, is they think that you just sold yourself out to the devil, and, and that your industry, your, your research is somehow tainted, and I'm not talking about our academic colleagues here, because of course, they work with industry. I'm talking about academia in general, they don't look at industry still, unfortunately, this is changing slowly, but they still don't look at industry very positively. That's what I thought of myself, and still hope I kind of do. Just, you know, working in industry is cool, there's a lot of really cool technology in industry. There's some things in industrial research that are simply not done in academic research at all, and they're really cool, and they're really exciting, and you can be a part of them if you join industrial research. But actually, what you do is you spend most of your time in your office, you know, looking at your science, looking at your codes, getting stuff to work, and worrying about whether or not somebody's gonna think it's useful. So if you're, if you're in industrial research, you will always be fighting an uphill battle to justify why is it that you're doing what you do, regardless of how academic the topic is. So you could be doing something that is very applied, and it's obvious to you that it's useful, but there will be people for which it's not obvious. So you will spend a lot of time justifying yourself, which is not in this slide. Here's academia. So society generally thinks of academia as this place where people just do science, and science is some people doing some stuff that's fairly esoteric, and you know, most well-educated Western societies recognize that there is some use to science, they don't always understand what that use is. Many other places just don't understand what we do. And so if you always have the chance to tell, talk to your friends, you know, do explain to them, if you can, what you actually do and how it's useful to them. Don't just brush it off as, oh my God, this is hard to explain, they're gonna think I'm a nerd, I'm not gonna tell them, do tell them, because it's our job to educate people as to what we do, not theirs to understand. Now this is what industry thinks we do, there's no question that this is what industry thinks we do. When I said I was leaving Schlumberger, pretty much almost everyone gave me a smile as in like, ah, that's what you're gonna be doing. But actually, we'll talk about that in a minute, here's what I think I do, in case you don't know who that person is in a slide, that's one of my favorite scientists of all time, that's Richard Feynman, and we have some, three pictures of him here. I'm not as good at science as he was, but I'd like to think I am. But in reality, and you see the picture in the background there is, you know, you're sitting, doing your job, similarly to what you do in industry, actually, the actual practice of research is not that different. But on top of it, I teach, which I love, actually. Spending time teaching and talking about science and getting people excited about science, people like you, is the reason we're there, right? So if you ever think of an academic career, do consider the service aspect of it. I'm not just there for my own research gain, I really enjoy that, and it's a big part of it for me, but I'm there for people like you, and as you heard Aver before, he feels the same way, although I guess he was a little bit less explicit about it, but I can tell you, he does feel the same way. So we can ask, we can talk about these differences a little bit more when we sit down, but for now, I'll just leave you with three pieces of advice, and if you can remember any one of these three, then I'll be glad. And this goes for both research and industry and academia. Okay, so first, this is really important, right? So it doesn't matter how good your research is, it doesn't matter how bright you are, it doesn't matter that you invented the coolest, most exciting thing in the universe, if you cannot get people to appreciate what you do, if you cannot get people to feel excited about what you do, even if you can communicate the technical aspects, if you cannot get people on your side to feel like, oh, this person is cool, I like them, and I like what they do, then there is no chance that your science will be heard. And science is a collective activity. Although we can think that the research that we do is isolated, it will one day be part of something, and, and that something is science, it's not just the research that we do. So communication is at the center of it. And in industry, it's even more important, because you're just gonna spend a lot of your time talking to non-research people who need to understand what you're doing, and they will not care about the details. What I say clearly here is I'm asking you to be absolutely dogged about your standards of communication, both orally, when you talk to people, when you do it, when you make a presentation, it's not just at a presentation, but also when you just have a conversation, and when you write. And we can talk about standards when we sit down, but please be dogged about this, never let your standards down, you can never be good enough at communicating, okay? And the best way of getting good is to do it often. It's some, for some of us, you know, scientists sometimes have our introverts, there many of us are, and so it's hard to do this often. We'll avoid it, but if you are that way, then make a point of not being that way, because it will help you. Here's the second one, and François actually said be the expert in the end, and I'll echo it, know your science. And what I mean by this is also be dogged about what you know. But that also means be dogged about what you don't know, because for everything you choose to know well, there are a million things that you're choosing not to know well. What that means is that you need to decide upfront, not after, what kind of scientist you need to be. And that's not easy, trust me. Even us, that have been doing this for a little while, have to ask ourselves this question every day, every month, every year, every time we write a proposal, and this is not easy at all, because, so there's a citation from Richard Feynman, the easiest person to fool is yourself. Very, very easy to convince yourself that you know something, or that you know enough. In fact, go across to, to our pavilions there, and take a look at the work that people do in seismic processing, and just have a chat about what seismic processing is, and you will hear people absolutely convinced about what's right and what's not right. And that's cultural, it's in our community, but stay away from it. Every time you hear something being, someone being absolutely sure as to what something is, then be convinced that they convince themselves about what they know. Don't do the same thing. And how many of us have seen Indiana Jones and the Holy Grail, just so I can tell how many people get this, no one gets this reference, oh, right? So in the final scene of Indiana Jones and the Holy Grail, they walk into this room, and there's this old Templar knight there, and he says they need to choose from a grail from a table, so the Nazi villain guy goes and chooses a cup, and he drinks from it, and he explodes. And then this guy says, you've chosen poorly. A very common fallacy, societal fallacy that we have, is to think that there is an ideal A very common fallacy, societal fallacy that we have, is to think that there is an ideal place for us, that there is an ideal job for us, that there is an option that will make us perfectly happy, and all the other ones somehow don't. And I haven't been around for that long, but for as long as I have, I can tell you that is false. You can be happy as long as you recognize which compromises you need to make. If you embrace the compromises, then almost every opportunity is going to look good and can make you happy. And that relates a lot to the talk that Anna gave us very nicely, although she focused on the private life. This also goes for personal life. In fact, it also goes for science. For those of us who think there's a holy grail in any aspect of science, good luck with that. You will be a frustrated scientist for as long as you believe that that's true. So please, remember, there is no holy grail. So also, beware of advice, you don't have to actually listen to me, so. Thanks.
I see discussions have been very, very good. Avr is still speaking, but that's good. I think I've just moved around a bit, seen you guys discussing. I'm not sure whether this area is more the guys thinking about academic job and this area is more industry job, but I think all the speakers could give very good advices. I just want to pick a quick one. I heard from Anna discussing about, again, her dual career with her husband, and the opportunity, sometimes not for everyone, but maybe for many of you, to have someone with a stable job, like you, and someone that wanted something a bit more risky. And of course, sometimes by yourself, you cannot do it. So hopefully, someone that likes risky job will have some support from family or from wife or husband. With this, I think we have to conclude. I'd like to give you a few more slides with some information. Well, first of all, I think if you are part of the Young Professional LinkedIn group, or if you're not joining, you know we try to provide some support in terms of basically career advice or interviews with experienced people that can provide views on their own career and their own experience. And we are trying always to interact also with student chapters and local EAG. To the LinkedIn group, as I said, is the main channel for us to reach you and for you to reach us. We have seen some increase in interaction from your side, but please, we are trying hard every Thursday to come up with some ideas and some food for thoughts. Just don't be shy and reply. And if you're not in the Young Professional Society, in the LinkedIn group, it just takes a second to join in. And finally, this is something that you are the first to hear about. Next year, we are planning, hopefully we'll manage to do it. It's a one-day event, the weekend before EAG, where we will do something a bit bigger than what you have done today, but with the idea of having speakers and some workshop-style, hands-on discussion, and maybe you will learn something about teamwork or how to interact with your peers and experienced people. So stay tuned, we will again update everyone on the LinkedIn channel. And I think now, Filippo, we are really done. We have to say a lot to thank you to everyone, and I think we are seeing the other group coming, so still, young professional out, women in, and some women can stay, of course.